Provide us that it goes to the proper channels, which of course we know we will.
Those were all the requests I had for the idea agreement.
That's it?
So.
That's all you got?
So, I.
Sir, how long do you want to be here today?
I think that commercial thing, that's nothing we can put in the developer's agreement, but that's a big piece of the bargain. Now, what we're talking about is where do we want that commercial to go in community and something we're really looking for support on the road as we move forward.
Yeah, and then I'll just speak on that a little bit too. Commercial business is what we need so that our taxes can stay low.
Stay low or get back to low or?
Well.
I'm throwing it out there because I've had more calls.
However you want to state it, it helps our taxes, you know, it helps them out. And so, the more residential we get out here, the more needs we have, we don't have those comm- commercial businesses to help us pay for that. To me personally, I think commercial business is, is what's most important. You know, having all these residential, you know, it's great people want to be out here, but let's support our commercial businesses, I think. However, that you guys feel comfortable doing that. And then as far as this development goes, to speak on Julie's comment about being fair, I think that's, I was thinking that as well. It's very important to be fair in how we handle all of the, all of the situations on here. Having something special with this development, some, that's been our conversations with the old councils, like how can we draw people to Horace? Like how, what makes Horace, you know, stand out from all the developments that's going on north of us? This is definitely has a unique, a uniqueness to it. So, so I, I'm thankful that they're having some creative thinking and we're not doing the strip malls. You know, how we can guarantee that we don't end up with strip malls. I mean, again, if it sits, it sits, then they're gonna, they have bills to pay, you know? So, getting these, getting these things happening and moving is, is important. And, you know, having the lake there, having these amenities, I think it's gonna, it's gonna be great as far as the proximity also to our old part of town and, and trying to create some interest on Main Street for some redevelopment on that street as well. I love the location of this versus everything going up by the school. So, that's just my two cents on it.
Thank you. Jeff?
As long as it's six with commercial and mixed use. Getting back to our, our previous, you know, topic, to me, I agree, it brings commercial out here. As far as allowing him to submit costs for their plans, I agree with that too. So, I know you want to wait a couple of weeks.
I just question the risk and the liability.
If, if they're putting up seventy-five percent.
That's the same.
It kind of limits it and I feel, you know, I, obviously we're gonna hear about that too, you know, that's a, that's a big number, seventy-five percent.
But that's what, that does what, cuts down on the city's risk, because we used to be sitting at fifty percent and that was a little bit too risky as far as I was concerned. Seventy-five percent was a compromise on that to keep us from getting, you know, just cutting down the risk for the city. So.
Naomi?
I mean, I see both points and I, you know, yeah, what do we do when the next developer comes and wants deferments? And I see your point too of, well, let's try to get some commercial in here and lower, lower some of the taxes.
But I think too, we're gonna be having conversations like this, but there's enough uniqueness behind this development and that's why, based upon what Mr. Dwyer was talking about, you know, understanding why we want to try and get commercial down here and things like that. All these developments are gonna be unique to some degree, but this one is, I'd say fairly unique as far as anything that we've seen and looked at for my time here anyway at least, so.
How much would it set us back to take a few days to on this, really get some, I mean, if we, could we call a special session by the end of the week and?
Can always do that if you want.
I know, I know it's a pain in the butt, but honestly, I just, I would really like to spend some time on this.
Yeah, and so, that's totally fine if the city council wants to have a special meeting on this. You know, we're just trying from a staff level to figure out the timing of this and if this gets pushed back another two weeks, likely we'll have to, we won't be able to bond for this project in this area around. And the city will just have to proceed with South of March third and Terragard's third, if Terragard's third is ready. So, that's, that's where we're sitting with this.
Good, maybe the city and other parties should think about getting this information in front of us a little bit sooner.
In the meantime though, alright.
In the meantime, I will defer and we'll be happy to make a decision yet this week so that we can move forward one way or the other.
Okay, so do we need to talk about anything in C here that would be any thing that we need to talk, talk about tonight so that we're ready to go at the special meeting?
I'll just tell you what I wanted to tell you and you can tell me how you want to proceed. So, what we have is the developers engineer has given the city, public works engineering, the plans and specifications for the project. We have reviewed them, provided comments. What I'm looking for is a approval of the plans and specs and a direction to authorize the auditor to, to prepare the advertisement for bids. Our schedule would be we'd advertise on the 12th of May, we'd open bids on the 3rd of June, and award on the 7th of June. So, that does, we do have a week in there. If you were to push this off, we wouldn't be able to be into the, in on the 12th through the paper, but we could probably, it's a big project, like they said, and it's an involved project, so I don't want to short the contractors any time in reviewing the bids and preparing their bids. So, it's kind of a, a balance here, let me see if I can look at the calendar quick. Uh, the first meeting in June is really late, 7th, so we.
Jim, if we approved this, like the C part of this one.
Yep.
On a contingent with the ID agreement being settled.
So, you don't, you don't have to award it. I mean, we can go through the motions, we can get it all the way to the end and you don't have to award the project if something falls apart in the ID agreement or something like that. We've got the first meeting in, in June, at that point, you could just reject all bids and then we'd start over. We'd lose a month, but that's something if, say, an ID agreement doesn't get flushed out, we could do that.
Yeah, that'd be like the worst case scenario.
That would be.
I think if we go through this.
I'm asking for a night to sleep on this guys. I'm not asking for a month or, you know, two weeks. I'm saying, I want to sleep on this and I want to have a little further discussion tomorrow morning with some parties to make sure that I'm making the correct decision for our community, I take that very seriously.
And I think you should have that if that's what you want.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but it's, I'm just wondering, Jim, if we just, if we approve this.
You've got this week. As long as we get it done this week, we can get it in the paper for advertising next Wednesday and maintain our schedule. So, if you're gonna have a special meeting, we put B and C on it and we move forward.
I, I would suggest you just do it all at one time.
Okay, that's fine.
Because then you could have a, you have a chance to think about that and. Because I think the ID agreement is that they give floor surround it, so.
Let's tentatively say Thursday and we'll reconvene on that one then. Do six, six o'clock. No, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, so then they'll talk to you, uh, to, or if you guys want to talk to them tomorrow and get that squared away and we can go from there. If you guys want to partake in that too, just go ahead.
Any good questions, we're both happy to answer them.
I appreciate that, I will be reaching out later.
Alright, so we're on to thirteen, Bert, you got this one.
Okay. Yeah, it just doesn't come up right, it's coming up digitally, I don't know why. Just want a normal PowerPoint.
Hey, thanks for your patience here. So, what you see before you is staff received an application for a plat and a zone change for a subdivision titled Deer Creek Estates for this property that you see on the location map here. It's located in the northeast quadrant of County Road seventeen and Deer Creek Parkway. This application was submitted on behalf of Matthew Hoff, on behalf of HS Investments for a thirty-four lot, two block subdivision to accommodate future residential land use. And in addition, the applicant proposes a zone change from A agricultural to R six, high density residential for all lots with the exception of lots one, two, twenty-three block one and lot eleven block two. These lots are proposed to be rezoned from A agricultural to P up public facilities to accommodate for a drainage pond and buffer lots along Deer Creek Parkway. So, in this proposal, I apologize, it doesn't look like the plat ma- made it in here, but on the west side of this property, there'd be a drainage lot along the outer perimeter, kind of in a U shape. We'd have single-family detached lots and then Lot two is kind of in the bottom center down here, which would accommodate for future attached housing units. Also, in this addition, there would be drainage easements that would provide relief for the subdivision, Ashland subdivision, third subdivision to the north. So, as this proposal, when staff looked at, the application started to evaluate it. We thought that it would align with the Horace twenty forty-five comprehensive plan that states that diverse housing options are the community vision for the city as well as the guiding principle. Also, we found that it aligns with the future land use map. Future land use plan designates this area as compact development. So, if you're not familiar with the future land use map, this was created with the input of the community of our city that identified areas of the city where the city would like to see future development occur. So, this area being a designated as compact development, it proposes development with three to five units an acre. When staff evaluated the proposal, we found that it would propose four point five six units per acre and complies with the suggested density. In regards to the land dedication requirements, the Horace Park Board reviewed and recommended that the applicant pay a fee in lieu of dedication in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents in lieu of dedicating one point two nine acres and staff also supports this recommendation. In terms of the past history of this application, back last year on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, the application was reviewed by the planning commission. At that meeting, the application was reminded, recommended for denial for concerns related for drainage and compatibility with the surrounding development. So, with these concerns in mind, on, on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, staff met with the applicant and the owners of the mobile trailer park located across County Road seventeen west of the proposed subdivision. During the meeting, staff verified that the applicant had purchased right away from Cass County and had incorporated that parcel into the plat and updated the plat to reflect that. And addition, staff verified that all parties agreed to move forward on plans to connect drainage from the adjacent mobile trailer park and the proposed subdivision to alleviate drainage issues. In terms of buffering of the properties, staff doesn't have any policy to rely on in regards to any requirements of what buffering could be or what it looks like, but staff does note along the whole northern edge of this property, there does appear to be some sort of landscape buffer with a tree row and a row of dogwoods. But staff also just wanted to mention that zoning ordinance does give the city approval, the authority to add additional conditions. If you were to approve of this development and as an option, you would have the ability to require fencing along the north and eastern boundary of this plat if you wish to do so. In regards to property owners, they were notified of the application via property notice letters. Currently at this time, staff received multiple requests for a copy of the staff report surrounding documents. However, I would like to step back and mention that last year during October thirteenth, staff did receive multiple comments from the public in opposition to the development. Most of the concerns were with the drainage, the backup of the ditch into the Cheyenne River, and then the compatibility to the surrounding development. And during the planning commission meeting, there were multiple neighbors that provided public comment to support those, the opposition. So, staff has evaluated the application for, excuse me, finds that the proposal is in line with the city of Horace twenty, forty-five comprehensive plan and therefore staff recommends approval of the proposed final plat and the first rate of the zone change is outlined in the staff report. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Russ?
Yep, Russ, go ahead.
I request that he does whatever is necessary. You can't, do you have a copy of the plat in front of you?
Yes.
Yep.
We have one here, Russ.
I suggest we get it up on the screen as well.
Yep, sure.
I have a question, bear with me a chance.
Sure. I apologize, here's the image of the plat, I'll just kind of go over this again, now that I have this up here. So, drainage pond would be over here, a single-family detached residential units would be over here. This is block two, this would account for attached housing units. This is a loop road in and out, this is a access aisle through this area. Then there's also a fence easement around block two. And then there's the drainage easements located on the north side of the properties up here.
Where's, excuse me, where's all the drainage pond located?
I do have Jim here and also John Lowry, they have a presentation to make as well, I would defer to them.
Right, let's get all the presentations done and then we'll start asking some questions, so we get everything out. Um, Russ, did you have anything else you wanted to add on that? Can't see you back there.
Just, just that planning zoning.
I don't know if that'll.
Unanimously for reason.
Right, and did you have some reasons or what was, what was their concern, just the?
First of all, the drainage pond overflow goes into a ditch that's wet already. There's, that's not a good solution. The other thing is I'm really not crazy about having a drainage pond of that size right up next to County Road seventeen. And the other thing was. Planning and zoning, the only reason planning and zoning hasn't moved to make a change to the land use plan in these areas up here is because this has been in the works for, let's just say, a long time. And until this finishes the cycle, we aren't, we can't, we can't mess with it.
Understood, okay. Alright, so who's gonna give the presentation here?
Captain Hoff here. Print's a lot smaller from over here. There you go. Did you get that plugged in?
Oh.
Thanks.
Well, we'll get.
We're good to go.
At the next break, I want contact information.
Just as you see now.
Thank you.
Evening, again Matthew Hoff, president of Brookstone Property. I'm representing HS Investments, I'm here with John Lowry and Michael Andrews and I presented the Deer Creek Estates addition project. Just a little bit about Brookstone, just to start so you know a little bit who we are. Company founded in two thousand and seven, we're a home builder and developer in the regional area. We develop in towns like Horace, but also in Mapleton and Wapentin and Fargo, West Fargo, the immediate area. And we do more than just home building and, and developing. We have a first-time home buyer campus, for example, on Fifty Second Avenue that allows people to find a realtor, buy a home, build a home, rent a home, get financing for a home and close transactions. So, we, we dabble in all things home-related. Deer Creek Estates is what I'm presenting though. Deer Creek Estates specifically, as we get away from just looking at this as just R six, what's being presented is a lock and key community, it's targeted towards those that are fifty-five plus in age. It's presented to them as, as that type of a community because it's maintenance-free. It's lawn care, it's no removal, are professionally managed, allows people to lock and leave and go to the lakes for the, for the summer and know that their properties are taken care of, or lock and leave and go to Arizona during the winter and know that their properties are being taken care of. There are some similar developments to these, these would be like the cottages in Rocking Horse or the ranch in the wilds in West Fargo. Thank you guys, we're just taking a look at that, again, there's the single-family lots along the perimeter, there's twin home lots in the middle. As you had mentioned, there's the, the drainage on the left side there. This is the type of home that would fit in there, it's a Brookstone patio home. Give you an idea of, of price point on these, these are in the low four hundreds. They're designed again for people in that fifty-five plus arena, they're single-story, no basements, fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot, two to three bedroom, two to three bath, two to three stall garage. And we have an example of one of these in the cottages at Rocking Horse, looks like that there. You can see that actually it's, the outside is, looks different, although they're the same home. One thing we're trying to do is reduce the amount of monotony as you go down a street. We'll have similar homes, but we can do this outside in quite a lot of different ways. That's from the front, that's, idea from the back there, lots of windows inside, looks like that, so very high-end finishes. Brookstone is viewed as a, as a community partner of the city of Horace. We appreciate the role that city government plays in development process and we want you to know that we're supportive of smart regulations and create predictability. That's something that we find like in the Horace twenty forty-five plan, helps us understand where the vision of the city is, how much we appreciate that. We also support the city efforts to create fairness and transparency with both its citizens and applicants. These would be things like your smart gov portal that you have, that's been super cutting-edge in the city of Horace. We've, we've liked that as, as builders and developers for the area. Want you to know that we also value the public input process. We were asked to reach out to neighbors and I think you'll probably find some that are here tonight that aren't perfectly supportive of the development, but we encourage that type of communication with, with neighbors. And that we're also reacting to the city's comprehensive plan goals. That's also a, an input process that the public has had input in and there's four, four goals that the city has outlined specifically in there. H one and H two, the housing choice and housing for all ages are the two that this particular development is attractive to. We're, we're trying to look at a certain demographic of the population that right now is being completely missed, which is that fifty-five plus type living. Do you want to talk a little bit about that recommendation for, for denial that planning had given to us back in, in October? Now, we, I don't feel like there's a rational nexus for it. We tend to agree with the city staff that there's three different standards that we're being held to, three things that we need to be looking at. One is the city, the city standards as codified in the city ordinances, the future land use map and the comprehensive plan goals and policies, all three of which this plat complies with. That said, we also want to continue to appreciate the neighbors' concerns when related to buffering. We agree that if the city would like to see more buffering, we're happy to do that. We think that's generally discussed and talked about through a developers agreement, not at the plat process, but I'm, I'm happy to talk about it here as well. So, again, at the, at that planning commission meeting, there, there wasn't a specific reason that was given for that, for that denial that we can find in the minutes, because there aren't, those minutes aren't, aren't there that say anything about that, but that in the staff report for this meeting, it cites two things. It cites compatibility and it cites drainage, which I think Barrett had made mention of. I'm just gonna touch on those just real briefly, compatibility, again, the four point five six units per acre complies with the, with the compact density zoning of three to five units per acre. So, from that perspective, that's, that's what we're looking at, is that future land use map and we comply with that. Again, I think we just saw this a moment ago, that shows that this is a compact development area. This is part of the, again, that was deliberated on for a long period of time, I was told to wait for this map to come out, this is what's come out, that, this is what's planned for this area. Something important on the city staff report, they, I highlighted a line there that, that says the subdivision.
Proposes a drainage ditch and sewer, excuse me, sewer drainage easement to improve city services to the proposed existing development north of the site.
So, it's important to note that not only are we providing a plan that's, that's in compliance, that, that we're providing that drainage plan, but also that we're picking up water on the, on the north end of the development, which is on the south side of Ashwood, there's some drainage issues there. We're, we're trying to work with the neighbors to try to pick up some of that pooling that's happening in the backyards. And the second part is that we provided a feasibility study. This feasibility study that was given by Lowry Engineering, hasn't received any comments from city engineering or public works. It's our opinion that augmented with the staff recommendations of approval that this is a, a, a way the city's telling us that we're in compliance with what we're proposing. I also think that drainage is a, is a detail that we'll continue to talk about after, after plat's approved, that the, the real details of that. So, in summary, I don't feel like there's a rational nexus for planning to say that this should be denied. I think it meets the requirements, staff report shows that in our application, that again, we meet the three things that complies with city standards, fits within the future land use map, embodies the comprehensive plan goals and policies. And with that said, we, we still maintain that we want to work with neighbors in terms of the buffering. I, I have no problem with a, with a full privacy fence along the entire north side, I have no problem if they say, you know, we want to do more vegetation or burmin of some kind on that side, I'm perfectly happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, do you have any questions for Matthew?
Yeah, I got a question for you. So, the picture of the one house you showed, it's a two-story. A small two-story, at least try to find it here. These are all single-story.
They're all single-story, they're all single-story.
They're all what?
They're all single-story.
They're all single-story?
Yes, sir.
I just assumed that one picture was a two-story.
I can show you. Oh, yeah, that one right there?
Yep.
Yeah, so that, that one wasn't even proposed for the development, it's frankly just a placeholder for a home we built.
Okay, I was wondering, that was what your answer for a fifty-five-year-old, and I was like.
It is not. Terrible example, sorry, alright, look at that one. Yeah, sorry.
And if family's over fifty-five, I'm not trying to, sorry.
If I could talk to the drainage just a little bit. John Lowry with Lowry Engineering and thank you for your time this evening and for your consideration. Excuse me, I lost my voice over the weekend a little bit, but. Yeah, you know, Russ raises a really good point about the drainage in the area that exists along County seventeen and the backup that occurs in the Cheyenne River. I just want to point out that in large part, we will be reducing the current burden on that situation and so I think it's just a communication issue. Currently, the site ends up in that ditch as it sits today. Maybe drains south and or west and ends up in that property as an ag field. We will be collecting the runoff and discharging it to the detention pond and from there, we will be reducing the runoff rate from the site up to the one hundred-year storm event from what it is today. Those meet all state and applicable standards and will actually help not hurt that situation in extensively. Part of this is, you know, the ditch is at about a nine oh six and a lot of, at the bottom of our pond or wet pond is about a nine oh two and so we need to drain that bottom four feet via a lift station. Runoff rates are probably, I don't have those off the top of my head, but twenty-five fifty CFS at that point or maybe even a hundred and we're draining it with a point two five. and we're draining it with a .25 CFS pump. So, we are going to be, to a large extent, reducing the runoff from the site in most events. It will gravity flow once it gets up to a certain storm event. We kind of have a weird outfall that's sized for that. And so, as Matthew said, there's some additional coordination that's needed. But I want to show that, you know, we're putting our best foot forward. We're putting rear yard drains in. We are directing all the flow to the detention, providing water quality and rate control prior to discharging it off-site, and that will help not hurt the situation that exists today. The second point that I'd say that Russ raised is about the location of the pond. You know, typically, we drain things to where they go, and we're pretty flat here. But in general, that west ditch is lower than the south ditch on the property. So, that's one reason we put it there. But the other is that, you know, the long-term growth plan for this property has, as mentioned, the housing. And County 17's a busy road, just like the existing neighbors. The people that live here aren't going to want to be right on County 17. They're going to want to be buffered from that, and that detention pond does help with that buffering. So, I think it is a really good location for the detention pond, both physically and as, from a planning aspect, to help the homes be buffered from that busy road.
Can we just, I hear Russ's response to...
Can I get responsible?
Well, I'd really like to hear Russ's because he has issue with those.
The pond is not going to be a feature as you're coming into the city of Horace.
Right. The aesthetics.
The aesthetics, though, are...
It will be a cattail slew.
The improvement of the drainage, I probably can't argue with that. I'm just not crazy about where we're putting it. I don't think it's really compatible with the neighborhood in the north.
Let's talk a little bit about that. How deep is this pond?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head.
You said you were 902, 906 roughly from bottom of ditch to...
Our overflow, I misspoke there. I believe the bottom of the ditch is a 904 on our wet pond volume. So, it won't be a cattail slew because we have the wet pond, and that's for two reasons. Number one, it eliminates the cattail slew issue. And number two, it also provides water quality for this area. The wet pond collects any sediment and treats it prior to being discharged. It's an engineering, you know, it's a design feature that's intentionally there.
Okay. What's the, let me cut to the chase here. I'm curious what the slope of that is going to be and the depth of that water on average is going to be. Because I recall last year, I believe it was three different incidents in the city of West Fargo, where parents were very nearby, but children magically following. Now, I realize this is a 55-plus community, but let's face it. Grandparents love to see their grandchildren, right? And oftentimes, they're young. So, I don't want to be faced with a situation where we have little kids getting into this because it looks like a fun place to swim and potentially having a situation. So, I'd be curious what that drop is and what the level of water will be. And I like, this is a very well-laid-out presentation. I do like the fact that you addressed a number of concerns here. We haven't heard from the residents yet, so bear with us. Because I too own a very large lot that will be very soon surrounded by a multitude of homes. But that being said, your willingness to look at some buffering or something of that along that line provides me with a little bit of comfort, but that's a safety issue that I really wanted to look at and provide me with a little bit of detail on.
Yeah, and so, a couple of things. Number one, there's a fence that's proposed for the west side of the homes, which would be the east side of the ponds. And that'll help with that situation. But the second thing that I'd say is there's kind of an engineering feature that we incorporate into all our ponds. You know, we'd like to get to that four-foot range because that's the level that cattails no longer grow. If you're at three feet, you might have that issue. And so, you know, on ponds that go deeper than that four feet, MPC, I think, is probably the one that came up with it. Don't quote me on that, but you put what's called a safety bench in. So, you come down at a four-to-one, and then you do 10 feet basically flat. There's a little slope to it, and then you dive off to the deeper. This pond won't have anything deeper than that. We're looking to get to that four-foot mark so that we can get the water quality treatment that we're looking for and also prevent that vegetative growth. And so, I do, you know, we appreciate working, I should have led with this. We appreciate, we've worked with the planning and zoning in Horace here for years now and appreciate their opinions and feedback, and they raise some very valid points. You know, we try to take that and do what we can. So, I understand about, you know, the entrance to Horace, the long-term growth plan. We felt the pond, you know, I just reiterate that the location with the buffering that it provides, we felt was the best solution there to comply with the long-term growth plan that's proposed.
Okay. Anybody else going to do a presentation, or otherwise I'm going to open this up for a public hearing?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so let's open it up for a public hearing, I'm sure. Go ahead. Introduce yourself with the microphone.
I'm Steve Smith, and I live at 6042, which would be on the north side, right on County Road 17 there. All of those ditches flow north because they all flow right in the back of my yard. And the county, I think 16 years ago, took out the trees there, and they put a culvert in there. They messed it up, so then they had to tear it up again, put it down a little lower. Now, and that's a culvert that has clothes on it, so the water doesn't flow back. Well, the culvert's already broke off, so the water flows back once that fills in the backyards there. So, all your water, if it's going to go anywhere, it's going to go into the back there. That doesn't touch the Cheyenne River. It's an oxbow that does not connect to the Cheyenne River in any way, shape, or form. That's why all of that water back there gets green in the summertime and creates mosquitoes everywhere.
So, the culvert, the, I guess you're talking about the off-site flow. So, when you, I think we're speaking of the same thing, but the highway ditch, you're saying flows north?
Yep, on both sides.
Yep, and so, this, the water flows north today, and we will be reducing the rate and that runoff comes off this site for what it is today.
And you're taking into account County Road 17 wide is also correct, and they would get rid of those ditches?
Would we take into account the current design, the current design that's in place? And any inviting that they do would have to take our stormwater, because that's where we drink. North Dakota has reasonable use doctrine, and I'm not an attorney, but I try to follow the law. And it says that, you know, you can drain your site at existing rates, but you can't flood your neighbor and you can't withhold water from your neighbor. You know, and that's what we're doing on the site. Everything that we're doing with that drainage follows all the legal laws and requirements.
For current, for current.
That's correct.
And then, the other thing is, is the county, I mean, the county engineer had told us at one time that they were going to get rid of our entrance because they don't want that entrance to come out. So, they were going to make a frontage road coming down there to 60th. Second, so if they, if they were to do that, so I mean, as long as you're taking into consideration all of these different things that they keep changing.
The county has officially banned that plan. They sold the property back to the group here. So, there's no plan for that at this time.
Those are my concerns, I mean, being a resident there. Obviously, I mean, I would like to see larger lots. We, there's five of us residents on that block, and everybody's got over an acre and a half. I've got two and three-quarters, and now you want to stick how many homes just south of me?
So, let me ask you then, being here on the north side there, if we had them put up a fence, I know you guys, there's some trees there, but if we had them put up a fence there, would that help?
Oh. No, the developer. I don't, I don't want to say that land shouldn't be developed, but I mean, I would just fine with it out of being developed because, I mean, that's why I moved to Horace. I moved to Horace to have a large lot. I drove back and forth for a year and a half in Grand Forks to find that lot. Once I moved here, you know, I mean, and now, I understand we're growing, but now you want to stick a bunch of little homes. I mean, I thought, this is, I think, the sixth or seventh time we've revisited this exact lot, and we just keep doing this over and over and over again. And it gets turned down, and then they come back. I get it. I mean, they've got this land. They've got to do something with it. But what we're finding is it's a repetitive process, and we're not getting anywhere. It's wasting your time and our time.
I think there's a, the other tough element is what, you know, the level of homes that are across the street versus your level of homes are like complete opposite of the spectrum. So, getting, you know, the older community in there, you're keeping it at one level. So, you're not having all of this higher balconies, people looking into your yard.
I would agree. I would agree with you there.
So, is there any other questions, or else I'm sure somebody else wants to get up and chat?
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Tim Craft, I'm right north of the development on that, right along County Road 17. I'm opposed to this development. These lots are, what, basically 5,000 square feet along most of my area. He's saying that these are 4.6 acres, but he's also including the road right away within the development. And the development to the east in Deer Creek, most of those lots are already eight to 10,000 square feet. And that's just for the lots. Most of these lots are between 4,000 and 6,000 square feet. So, I'm also opposed to the drainage because that county road or that county ditch, it gets backed up from the Cheyenne River because of the high water level. It'll come back into the ditch. So, are they going to be, start pumping the Cheyenne River, and where is that going to go? So, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Barack Hanson, Fargo side on the east side of the development there. And kind of opposed to it, the smaller homes and the smaller lots. My lot is nine thousand, a little over 9,000 square feet. And if it's going to be backed up to me, it's just going to be packed in there versus what we have in Deer Creek. The other thing, my concern is going out of Deer Creek, out to County Road 17, traffic going in and out there. That road is so narrow. Is there going to be one-way traffic going through there, morning rush hours and afternoon rush hours? And that's a couple of the concerns I really have. And I'll go back to like what Sarah said, too, with this child safety. Right on our side of the street, we have 19 kids in that little stretch right there, between the ages of one and 10. And I got a couple of my neighbors here that are with that, so kind of another thing, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be asked a little bit. Dave Bothkun, I own the property that's on the north of that development to the east end of it. So, I'm not opposed for you developing it. It's your property development, right? But what we're asking is you develop it to the surrounding area. So, I think we live in a R1, and most of you guys are in a R2. And we want to put a R6 up against that. Not sure that's fair to us guys. And I do agree with Steve with the drainage. When that ditch gets full, it comes from the Cheyenne River through that oxbow, fills that ditch up. That's what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Chuck Carter. I live on 68th Street, and I'm across the street from where Brock lives. Okay, one thing, answer me this question on the drainage or on the pond. How far from the highway is that going to be? And the reason I'm asking that, I guarantee you eventually it's going to be a four-lane going down through there. It's going to happen. So, how, so how far are they going to build a four-lane through there down the road? Are they going to have it back far enough?
Jim, you're going to have to help me out there, because we don't, when we talked to the county, I know this got brought up probably two years ago. They hadn't really defined, you know, the size. You know, they had talked about, you know, they're going to turn lanes, maybe a five-lane. But again, this is just talk and conversation. And then whether we actually need to go to a four-lane. And that was even a part of a conversation because 45th and 76th and 64th will be open at some point. They think that more traffic might be going that way. So, they're not really sure whether they're going to actually need to go to four-lane or not. So, it might just stay as it is. So, but this is, again, a year and a half ago, or maybe even two now. That was when that talk was. Maybe things have changed, but I haven't heard any more about it, to be honest.
Another thing, all them homes that are proposed in the back there, if I remember, I seen a schematic of them. I think the lot is 41 feet wide. My garage is down there that big. Okay, so, next question.
Okay.
How much, how many feet between each house? How many feet? Where I live, it's got to be 14.
Oh, setbacks?
Yep.
Oh, hang on a second.
I can answer that question. Yeah, the R6 zoning district requires a five-foot setback side yard, so it'd be 10 feet minimum between homes.
10 feet. Then you're looking at Wonder Wells jammed in there. You can't even get a lawnmower through them. I think, I have, like the gentleman before said, he doesn't have a problem. I don't have a problem with that, but cut back the houses to 20 instead of 34. And it's supposed to be a 55-and-over community. What's there to do there? There's nothing. Absolutely nothing. If I eventually, I've lived in a house now, I'm new to Fargo. I've been here a year and a half. Eventually, I'm going to have a patio home, but I guarantee you, there's not going to be 10 feet in between me and my neighbor. I came, I came from a place out in the country. I didn't have to worry about neighbors. And now, I do, but I got good neighbors.
They all like hearing that, so you go there.
Right, we're...
Right, I understand what you're...
Yeah, and another thing was with the kids. Like, I'm 75 years old, and the neighbor down the street is 71. Everybody in our neighborhood's in their 30s, and we're the two old cottages that our grandpa's there for all the kids. But like I said, I don't have a problem, but cut back the housing there. Make, I mean, R, what is it, R6? That's ridiculous. Ridiculous.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to get up and talk?
Hi, Annette Craft. I live right behind on the corner on this side. My question, I guess, is when this process first started, we heard that these homes were going to be targeted at first-time homebuyers or the teachers that were going to be filling the schools, the new schools. Now, it's saying it's a 55-plus community. Is it a guarantee that that's the way it's going to be sold? Is it going to be a 55-plus community specifically, or is it an open community? What is the target specific group demographic?
Matthew, go ahead and answer that, please.
So, Mr. Craft was referring to was a plan a couple of years ago for this project, and it seemed like it was actually almost a recommendation from neighbors that this, if there's going, if there's going to be something like this here to keep it quiet. This is an attempt to try to keep something, excuse me, to try to create a project that has a good buffer. A good buffer would be something that is more geared towards 55-plus, quieter. Again, it's lock-and-leave type living. And so, to answer the other part of the question, no, it's not, you don't have to be 55-plus. We have, we have done these communities, and we've restricted it at 55-plus, and it is a deterrent. So, what we'd rather do is build a housing type that people that are not 55-plus do not want. Again, patio living, no basements, smaller 1,500 square feet, two bedrooms, two bathrooms. No family wants to live in that. Maintenance-free living, so you cannot maintain your own lawn. You cannot maintain your own stormhole. You're never going to pay for that. Families don't want that. So, we're restricting it by the type of housing that's being built there. There isn't a mechanism that I can provide to the city that's going to guarantee a type in here. Frankly, don't have a lot of different options. R6 is the only thing that works for patio home-type living. That's it. It's the only thing. Well, somebody who's, somebody who wants, we'll go to a different code for just one. We'll go to R4, minimum of 8,500. Somebody who wants, who's 55-plus, that wants all these things taken care of, cannot afford to have a 10,000-square-foot lawn mower. They can't do it. It doesn't work. I'm telling you, other projects that are like this, this is the helpful way that I ask.
Okay, so, Bill, go on up and...
Well, I just had a question for you, because on Appendix C on the version I have, those houses in the middle are actually all twin homes. So, it'd be 20 units in there plus the, I think, 19 or 20 around the outside.
Correct.
That's 40 homes. That's forty homes in like five point four acres, which is a lot more than the four to six that was stated. It's actually like seven and a half, seven point three homes per acre. Which is far greater than the density anywhere around there.
But I think that's an updated plot. We updated the plot.
So there's only gonna be ten on the interior?
No, there's not.
Yeah, there's gonna be twenty. It's updated.
There's ten lots, twenty.
That's correct.
Twenty houses.
That's correct.
Forty, forty living units in five point four four acres.
No, in, in eight, in eight acres.
Well, there's three acres that are taken up from the.
Yeah.
From the water retention.
I refer to Barrett whether or not those are part of that or not. I would think that improved.
Yeah, you know, we've.
In the second part of the law review proposal, it's, there's yielding five point four four acres of medium-density residential.
Yeah, we've had those discussions with the planning commission in the past. I was guided to look at the total acreage, uh, with the number of units and then divide. And that's how we're gonna go forward with the interpretation of the future land use map density requirements. So that's exactly what staff did. Uh, we took seven point eight nine acres and then divided by the, uh, or the, took the units and divided by that acreage.
Okay. Anybody else wanna get up and talk? Going once, going twice? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing for right now. What's it? Oh, Russ, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, we checked with, uh, Barrett and Lucas, but I believe if more than twenty percent of people oppose it, it takes a three-quarter vote by city council to pass. Is that correct?
I think we've talked about this once before. I believe that was right, but.
Barrett, can you pull up the GIS and tell me how many of these homeowners here directly abut this land?
Yeah, yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight properties.
I'm curious, how many total abut this development and how many of them are here tonight? Give me a count here so I can see. Hands up. One, two, three, four. Are you together? Five out of how many total properties? Eight?
Go ahead, Lucas.
So the, the citizen protest ordinance that Chairman Sarr referenced says if a protest to amendments, conditional use permits, variances, and subdivision flats is signed by owners of twenty percent or more of the area of the lots included in such proposed change or of the area adjacent extending three hundred feet from the property to be changed, the amendment shall not become effective except by a favorable vote of at least three fourths of the city council.
So it's what, technically it's supposed to be a written protest? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. But I mean.
Yeah.
Just for knowledge, there hasn't been any vote yet.
Right.
So.
All right, what do you guys think? Looking for some feedback.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Are you opposed to reducing the number of lots? I, it has to be asked. I mean, everybody has said it, so I'm just, I'm gonna ask you, James.
Yeah. And so, originally when this started out, this was a planning development. Can I just go back a little bit in time, if you don't mind?
That's fine. We're, we're new here, so please do it.
I say go back in history on this, so they know, we've fed this conversation a few times.
Okay. Uh, initially it was proposed to be a planning development, started as rental, moved into first-time home buyers. And we thought that actually had upwards of sixty-nine units on there, a lot, that's right.
Holy lord. Like I said, we've been here a few times.
And subsequent plans I've submitted have reduced significantly density to get to this point. It got to a point where the stance of, of planning and zoning was, because this area fits with, it's outside the future land use map, they don't have an opinion for the area. Wait till the future land use map came out. So I waited for two years, the future land use map came out, and provided a project that meets the city's ordinances. So, to answer your question, no, I've already cut it in half to get to this point. And I've also changed the type to try to make it more compliant. This is, this is an area that does not have a through street to, to those developments. Not, we're not driving past these to get into any of these areas. It's already buffered along one side. And frankly, along the Fargo side, no, those lots on that flat are seventy thousand square feet, are pretty darn close to the same square footage as the one in Fargo side. So I feel like I've tried to come as far as I can. I'm encouraged of putting more buffering on the north side.
The ones on that side are larger.
They are larger. Correct. You're, you're saying that the lots on that side, is that I proposing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, what I handed you, Breton and Barrett, did you get a chance to read it?
I did.
Okay, is that just somebody?
I didn't clarify, clar- typo, clerical error.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it, all of a sudden there's discrepancy there. And I'm like, from October thirteenth to now, it is not the same document.
Yeah, I apologize. It's a clerical error. It's thirty-four lots.
Okay.
Okay. Sarah, you got any comments on this one? I said, I know we've gone, we've cut a couple go-arounds here, um, with this. And, uh, obviously.
I've never been to plan, never to the council. I've always pulled it back and re-done the plan, right, plan, zoning, pulled it back on the planning zoning.
Right.
Never have.
So, so what are you willing to do additional in for a buffer? If, I mean, if you're not willing to budge, they need to hear something. And then we're going for feedback, I guess, from now. So, you say you wanna work with us.
Yep.
What do you got?
For buffering?
Yep.
I think the, I think the best buffer is a full privacy buffer.
Which is?
Which is, which is a full privacy, meaning three planes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to something different. If they like more vegetative buffering, I can do that. If they want burmine, I can do that. Those are, unless there's somebody else, another idea, those are the three typical ways to buffer between these. I appreciate you saying, asking to, what else can we do?
We're, we're, you're saying you wanna work with the city, so let's, let's figure something out. Uh, I realize you wanna build, they realize you wanna build. Some of them are saying, hey, if it's, meets with, you know, something that was currently there, then I don't know if they would have a problem with it. It's just, you see some houses that are fairly high-end value that are gonna be butted up against you. And I hope that just, it's understandable. Um, how do we, how do we find a happy medium? And so, you, you see some of these lots, I think, are they forty-nine feet wide? Is that what the, did I read right? Okay, but, but you got like five of those, I won't say five in a row, but you got four in a row and a couple others on that backside up against these eight or eleven houses?
Forty-nine, sixty-one, forty-nine, sixty-one.
Okay. Um, and obviously you've got a dollar amount in mind, right? If you, if you remove one of those lots, how much is it gonna affect your pocket? But then I'm not asking to throw that out there. I'm just saying, in your mind, what's it gonna take? I mean, you're, you're, you're not willing to go anything.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Would, would I be willing to remove a, a couple lots on there? Say, yes, I would. I just don't get any feedback from anybody saying that that's gonna be good enough. Everybody's talking about a zone to a completely different code, and that code will not work on that piece. So I'm hesitant to say I'm going to give any more, because everything that I've given to this point falls on nephew's.
I understand, sir, Annette.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to work on our communication thing with both developers and our residents. And this is where we're trying to have some sort of negotiation, okay? Um, and maybe tonight is not their appropriate night for it. I don't know. But at least I'm trying to make sure that they hear it and you hear it, and you guys are in the same room together.
It's the perfect night for it. Let's get it.
Well, it's the same.
I got more to do.
We've done this.
You forgot mine.
We've been, we've been here a few times before. Um, so, okay, so we talked about this before too, you know, that as far as the city goes, when we have things like this, we are always looking for a transition. Assuming you have the bigger lots, you want like some type of a transitional housing. So you don't have the little houses up against the larger acreages. I mean, that's why these guys are here today, obviously, because they don't like that.
To, to that point, right, we're, we're losing sight that, that this was taken into account by the city staff.
Well, I know, I'm just.
And hired consultants. And there's a trailer car right to the south west of that, well within three hundred feet of this property. Just to point that out.
But, if I may, I'm Mike Andrews, and I represent Brookstone Property. Um, with due respect to the comment, uh, given the city staff recommendation, given that there was nothing in the minutes uh, supporting the denial at the planning commission stage, I, I can't tell you anything Lucas won't tell you. I mean, you're well represented, obviously. But the city has to correctly interpret and apply its controlling law. Otherwise, its actions are arbitrary and capricious. You know that. Lucas knows that. And so I know you have to take the feedback into account. But that's been done throughout this process to the point of compliance with the density requirement, so say the, the city staff. So that's the point I needed to make. Thank you.
Okay.
I still don't see how that's true, even if you account for a full seven point eight nine acres and there's forty units on there.
When did the plan change from that one, that, uh, four year?
Because that comes out, it still comes out over five units per acre.
But again, that, that report is outdated.
This is not, he said this is that.
That's what came from the city.
This is the most recent one. Those units on the inside are all split in half.
It's one lot with a twenty-one month.
I don't, it, it came from, I, say, I don't know.
Good question if that reflects the land purchase that was done through the right-of-way on the left side of the property.
This is the one that we just got, appendix C in the law review plan.
Okay.
It has forty-two units.
Seven point eight nine acres.
So Barrett, who's got the, has he got the most current one? Or we got the most current one sitting up here?
I got it to you later.
Yeah, the most current one got sent out in individual emails to persons that requested them. Uh, in terms of planning commission staff reports, we have those online at our agendas a minute. So anybody could pull that. That would be the, uh, one that is not the most current.
Barrett, that's the one you sent me.
I'm not denying that I did. I'm just stating that those that asked for it did get a copy of the most current staff report.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, guys?
I find myself in an interesting situation here. Mr. Andrews, you represent Brookstone for which firm?
Anderson Bible.
Thank you, sir.
All I get is for that.
Thank you, sir. A very, very interesting situation. So we have a piece of property here. It's gone back and forth well before my time, your time, several of the people's time on this platform. A lot of frustration, can't seem to get answers, can't seem to understand or interpret ordinance or code. It comes before us, five of the eight adjoining property landlords are here in protest.
There's more here than that. I'm in the development. I'm within three hundred feet, never got a notice, but I'm not, uh, abutting it, but I'm right there. So there's more than five.
So, I have to tell you, I'm really pleased that the developers here are saying, help me. I'm also really pleased that the residents are here saying, no, don't, we need help. It's clear to me that we need to figure out a transition or a buffer ordinance. And under no circumstances should we ever consider R six next to R one or R E style lots. Um, but it puts me in a unique position. And I don't know how much of confidence. But we want to continue partnerships with developers, clearly. And we want to represent our residents fairly.
So what we've done in the past with this, when we ran into this, is I had the developer meet with a couple of designants from the protest group and see if they could hammer out something. It has worked in the past. I don't know if you'd be willing to talk about that. Pick a couple of, a couple of the people here who are gonna protest. I don't care who, um, sit down with you and see if you guys can work out something. We could sit up here and dictate it too, but if you guys wanna take a crack at it, have a conversation. If you can't, you can't. If you can, then come back and let's talk about it.
Do you want one of us present?
And we, yeah, we, one of us can be present. We didn't last time, but we sure could be if you wanted to be.
Is this close to what you want?
No.
Well, I'm just, okay, so I mean, all right, we've got that going. But I mean, if you guys don't even wanna talk about it, you don't even wanna talk about it, we can make a judgment call here and now, and we can make it happen.
You got seven houses staring into one backyard. Who wants fifteen people staring at you?
But can you guys have a conversation with the developer on this or not? Or do we have to make a judgment call?
Yes, yeah. Will they sit down with us?
That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Okay, why don't we do that? At least try that route before we have to sit and make any decisions up here.
Who else is involved? I'll be.
I'd say two or three of you guys just get together. Jeff and you have somebody with you too.
I'm tied up on Coach Track a hundred miles out here.
I'm gonna let you guys make the, get together and have that conversation.
It might not hurt to get a roster of everyone that's here.
Yeah.
And, uh, make sure then that you all talk amongst yourselves and pick a couple representatives.
I think I just let you guys have that conversation, see where it goes. If it doesn't go anywhere, okay, but we had the conversation. Okay?
And since you're here, um, my, my ask is that, for future reference, can you include or CC, city council on any official email running out from your law firm? Notify people of meetings like this, just so that we're not blindsided by not knowing this was coming?
So anytime that there's a public hearing for rezone, uh, subdivision, variance, conditional use permit, uh, city ordinance says that, uh, the city will provide a notice to the, um, adjoining property within three hundred feet. So that's automatically done by our office. It's just a letter that they get. Um, I don't know when the ordinance changed. Before it was a hundred and fifty feet. And so I don't know when that applied. Uh, but recently the city changed it to three hundred.
I just meant CC the city council.
We don't send an email. It's, it's just a letter that gets sent to all.
Can you include all the city councils on a letter? It's another, what, two dollars and fifty cents in stamps? Is that, is that a fair request? Just so I don't get blindsided?
Yep.
Okay.
And so, so the letter gets sent, and then we also send, uh, a notice to the forum of the public hearing, and that gets sent to the city. And I, I get what you're saying, but I'm just letting you know that there is this additional notice to.
How many people read the form in here on a regular basis? Okay.
No, I'm saying for the city just.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to make it funny. I'm just.
No, for city notification purposes, our office sends that to the city, so the city is aware of it. So the city could send that email to you as well, to let you know that there's gonna be a public hearing.
Let's, let's make sure we do that. A little common sense here goes a long way.
If you get a, it's either email, or if you get a hard copy, it'd be in your mailbox here. So.
That's fine. As long as I get a copy, I don't, it's not gonna bother me. I just wanna copy more than three days in advance of this meeting.
All right, so if we're gonna do that with A, and we're gonna sit on this for a while, uh, Lucas, do we need to go on? Or Barrett, do we need to go on with B? Or do we wanna wait until we see where this goes?
I would recommend that we table it until, be ready to review.
You okay with that, sir?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's what we'll do. We're getting something done. They're gonna have a conversation and see where it goes. Okay, go.
So this meeting between some of the homeowners and the builder and the councilman, the plan is moved out?
That's what we're trying. Okay, so what I'd like to have happen is for the people who are protesting here tonight that wanna get involved in this, I'd say two or three of you guys, you guys could figure that part out. Um, point person can be Jeff. We can go, we can help coordinate this. Uh, I'm more than likely gonna recommend you guys meet here, uh, some evening and just chitter chatter about it, and we'll see where it goes. I'm gonna let you guys pick the time and the date.
Is there a timeframe?
Not Thursday, obviously.
No, not Thursday.
Not Thursday. We have something else going on.
And Mr. Mayor and council, council members, if I may, I, I would agree with that request. Is there going to be some sort of timeframe? I know you probably can't require it, but you can. And because my concern is that we're involved in a process here, a legal process, that is supposed to take place. And so, we really need a time limit to make sure that this happens. So we know we're gonna fish your cup A, and then we can come back and do.
Right. I guess it was up to me. I'd say try and get it done this week. I don't think that's unreasonable. I think you could get together and have a conversation. Unless you got, unless everybody here.
For the initial conversation.
For the initial conversation, yeah.
Okay. How about?
The plans to get back to.
Like, how long are you tabling?
Well, I think this thing, okay, so right now, what I, here's what I'm suggesting. If you guys can get to have a conversation this week, then Jeff can report back to us where we're at with that. And then I think we can make a judgment on that and let everybody know if we're gonna meet again in a special meeting, if it's gonna wait till the next meeting, or if you guys have come up with an arrangement, we can make this happen. Let's go with that. For right now, though, I'd say let's try and get everybody, get, who's all gonna be involved in this, try and get this done this week. I mean, if you can't, you can't, but let's then early next week. And then let Jeff report back to us and then we can take it to the next level. Okay?
Like paper to sign up on?
It's already going around.
So our point of conversation now is Jeff.
Jeff is gonna be point. Yep.
And my name is now on the city website?
Yep. He is current. Just fine. You can do that too. I'm just saying he is point on this one. Okay. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Oh, it's a requirement though. You have to sit through the whole meeting if you should.
Yeah, right? Oh, you guys are sitting in the back there, right? All right. So Barrett, let's go on to fourteen, see if we can be out of here by midnight.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So for, uh, item number fourteen, this is kind of unique. Uh, with our current zoning ordinance, uh, you know, obviously we have a lot of challenges. That's why we're working on a new zoning ordinance. Uh, this one relates to signs. Uh, so right now our sign code, I, I have to be completely upfront on this. It's awful. If McDonald's came to our city today and requested a sign, our zoning ordinance would not allow for them to put up a sign. So what staff has done to kind of fill the gap, uh, when we get sign permit applications, well, during the review period, if it looks like something that we've approved before, we'll typically approve of the application. However, uh, when we get new requests that we've never ran into before and we have no past, uh, practice to rely on, uh, we want to bring it to this forum, to the public, to get a public hearing, public comment, and get review on a concept so that we can take that information, carry that forward to review all other signed permits until we get a new zoning ordinance. So what we currently have right now is a proposal. Uh, this is off of the Horace Church Lot off of County Road seventeen. Um, we have Mr. Vogely today. Uh, he is, uh, let me see if I can get you a concept drawing here. I'm sorry. That's not what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Just get the whole memo up here. He's proposing three signs, one pylon sign and two, uh, monument signs on the northwest corner of, uh, the, uh, Horace Church Lot. And he's proposing a distance of two hundred and fifty feet between signs. So as you could see in exhibit E, on the northwest corner would be the pylon sign and then the ones to the right and then south would be a monument sign. Our current zoning ordinance requires that on commercial properties, you can have more than one sign, but they have to be spaced at six hundred feet apart. So I just wanted to bring this in front of the council, uh, for discussion and then action. Uh, if you would like to allow this to go forward or, uh, if you would like to see, uh, these proposals meet the six hundred feet spacing requirement.
Any reason why they were six hundred feet to begin with?
I'm not certain about the history of the zoning ordinance or why that was specified. Uh, it was written back in two thousand and three and we have no records that indicate what that conversation was.
Russ?
Yeah.
You were around back then?
Oh, he's been around a long time.
I'm sorry.
Actually, they were written in two thousand and seven. The whole ordinance is from two thousand and three. I was around when it was written. Uh, most of that ordinance was written to not have any kind of development in town. Frankly, that's why we're writing a new one. The sign ordinance, uh, I proposed a few years back that we just take West Fargo's and move it over. But it's, uh, we were making so many changes so fast, signs was so.
It was far down.
So far down. I would go with whatever looks good at this point. The church is not going to, this church and the school are probably not gonna do anything that the other churches and schools in the community haven't already done. And it's, there is no really good, good process. There's not a process within the ordinance to do anything other than exactly ordinance. The only ones who can do anything other than the ordinance is the city council and, uh.
And that's why we're here tonight.
And that's, those look pretty. Okay?
Yep. Travis, you wanna just give us a little, little update on that?
I wanna speak as little as I can.
I know, and I'm gonna try and keep you on a clock here, okay?
Um, we were approached by, uh, the Horace Hawks Booster Club. So this is the Booster Club. The sign will be owned by the high school, but the Horace Hawks Booster Club approached the church to put a sign on the corner of the church property. Um, after much looking around throughout the entire area, because the school doesn't have any, um, abutting property to County Road seventeen, they have to look for a space to put a sign that announces the basketball games, that announces the volleyball games and so forth. And it made quick sense that the church was the right spot, the right property because of commercial development that will eventually come and other signs that will come. Um, however, the church, you know, now that, um, Lakeview Drive has been put in and as the church will finish its parking lot, the front door of the church is probably gonna be changing from the entrance that is currently south to eventually more likely the north side where cars will come in. Um, and so the church doesn't want to necessarily give away a special spot where they're gonna be able to put signage, um, illustrating where the church is. But at the same time, this is a perfect partnership opportunity for the school, um, for the church and for Horace. You know, the, the school coming here, um, having an ability to have the, um, the board that announces the basketball game for all of our kids playing basketball, volleyball and so forth. This makes sense. The church property is nine and a half plus acres. Um, you know, so being able to put those signs out there, this is the most logical spot. And we've come to an agreement on how to make it work and we just want to be good neighbors and good citizens of the community. And this makes the most sense.
Okay. And the council gave a thumbs up and you're good there?
Yeah.
Perfect. So what about, the only thing I was gonna ask you about was, uh, the, uh, power and that, how was that, where was that gonna come from to go?
So the power is probably most likely gonna come from the church.
Okay.
Uh, because we can't quite figure out how to get it all the way to the school through easements and everything else.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But we're gonna have that all figured out and the power will be run in a special sense to where easements would normally be. It's not just gonna be ramshackled around there. So.
Okay. Thank you much. Do you want to augment anything he said or he probably? I think he did too. Okay. Um, do you guys have any questions on this? This is something they've been talking about. When did you guys start this? It's about a seven, eight months ago we started chatting about this?
Yeah, we got the Booster Club started on.
Yeah. So there's been an awful lot of conversation that went around to kind of land on this, as to where you put the signs and, you know, where does the school put theirs and where the church put theirs? So again, been quite a bit of conversation to land on this.
I'm thrilled to see the partnership. I'm thrilled after not just this meeting tonight, but some of the divisions in our community to see two entities working together like this and really bring something to the table, realistic and beautiful and benefits everyone. Thank you. Thank you both.
Is there gonna be another sign for the school on the north, like off of seventy-six, or is this the only?
Poss- possibly. Um, once that road gonna be done or once it's gonna be going on the interstate eventually.
So no plan, but?
No plan now, but that's.
Probably hopefully.
Be on the school property there.
Yep.
They have a, they have these small bricks of, uh, structure there with a sign.
Are these signs gonna be, are they gonna be lighted from the inside or lights from the outside?
They're backlit signs.
Beautiful.
Um, and the Horace Hawk sign is backlit, but then there's a, a section in the middle that actually changes.
You see like what Cheyenne has on the corner of.
Yes, yes.
Similar, very similar.
Oh, something just beautiful that represents our community and our schools that you can see as you're driving at nine. You know, this is excellent. Thank you.
And we do, may do a sign there in the future if, if it warrants it.
So this has advertising then on both sides? Is that what those?
Two sided sign.
Yeah.
And the church embedded the DAF class B reputable advertisers can't be. They have different establishments.
Strip clubs, that kind of thing. Yeah, probably not gonna have that on there.
Or church council already.
I figured as much, so that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to add too, in terms of regulation with the lighting, uh, we have had past practice where we've looked at LED lights. So we do have a NITS rating and hours of operation that we would, uh, implement if this were to go forward.
Yeah, we're working with the new signs and if we show them that, we'd be compliant. Basically, so you wouldn't see the sign from about five miles away lit up. You could tell there's light, but not so, well, you, so.
All right. Any other conversation on this one? Otherwise I think, uh.
Motion to approve.
All right. So Sarah makes a motion. Naomi does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous. Good job, gentlemen. Thank you.
I think we should have put them a little higher on there.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Brett, you like to stay here just being.
We, we like Travis to help keep everything order.
Travis, yeah, he's here right here too. I think there was some like enactments that went on tonight that maybe were precursors for.
You think?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, fifteen. Brett, you got that one. This is pretty.
Lucas, you wanna touch base?
So Mr. Mayor, this is just a second reading of the tobacco ordinance, the one that changes the age from eighteen to twenty-one. Uh, and then changes the penalty from class B misdemeanor to, uh, slap on the wrist. No changes from last time.
Yeah, all right.
Motion to approve.
Chelsea. Sarah, I'll just say Sarah. Chelsea, Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done, move on. Noise ordinance, Brenton, go.
Okay. This is basically no changes other than it was discussed at last consulting.
So Mr. Mayor, the change in this one was, uh, adding a provision in there that construction was, it wasn't exempted. Should we, so we just added that time that we discussed restriction in there. So construction exemption except between the hours of nine and six AM.
Okay.
So that was the only change to that noise ordinance.
Yeah, that's what we talked about. So, yeah. All right.
This is the second reading.
Anybody got any questions on this one? Can we beat this one up pretty hard last time?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sarah, Chelsea, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Barrett, you got seventeen.
All right.
What are we looking at first here? Okay.
All right. So what you have before you is a application for a zone change from Plan Unit Development or PUD to C one neighborhood commercial for the properties located at three seventy-four, three ninety-four, four oh four, four thirty-four, Main Street North and ninety-seven Fourth Avenue North, uh, the properties that you see on the screen of the location map. Uh, for the purpose of a future anticipated commercial office development. So the subject properties were zoned from C one to commercial, or C one neighborhood commercial of the PUD when the zone change application was approved by the city council last year on February third, two thousand and twenty. And as part of the, uh, Icon Company Mixed Use Building Project Proposal, uh, for a plat titled Greeley Edition, if you recall. Uh, so with PUD zoning districts in general, they require an agreement that stipulates sites, site specific details and requirements that may deviate from zoning ordinance, uh, standards. And after the PUD zone change application was approved by the city council for the subject properties, the agreement limited any future development on the site to a mixed use multi-story building with commercial and thirty-two unit, uh, multifamily fam, uh, land uses. So, uh, the development wasn't implemented and the project was amended by the developer. Uh, afterward, uh, Dicky Rural Telephone Cooperative, uh, acquired the property and didn't have the intention of constructing the project as specified in the PUD agreement, but rather brought forth new plans to construct a commercial office. So because the PUD would not allow for the development proposed by the applicant, the applicant was requesting to change the zoning district of the properties back to the original C one neighborhood, uh, commercial zoning district that would be subject to the same requirements that were in place before the properties were rezoned to PUD and the commercial office development would be able to move forward. So as required by ordinance, property owner notifications were sent out within three hundred feet of the proposed subdivision. And to date, uh, staff received one comment. Uh, the comment stated that he was disappointed with the transparency with the application process and therefore was opposed to the project. Uh, but, uh, staff has evaluated the application, finds that the proposal meets with the intention of the city twenty forty-five conference of plan. And therefore staff recommends approval of the proposed first reading of the zone change as outlined in the staff report. And, uh, please let me know if you have any questions.
So this was, um, uh, we, this has gotten rezoned a while back for that other project that we were gonna be doing, right?
Correct.
This is the change to that? Yeah, okay.
Yep. Also, I wanted to point out too, uh, it looks like it's not on here. Uh, the planning commission recommended that the applicant install a north-south easement on the east side of the property so that it would connect to the properties to the south. If you notice, the southwest parcel currently doesn't meet our zoning ordinance requirements of right of way touch. So this condition would enable access to that site if it were sold off to a different property owner in the future.
Okay. Russ, did you guys have anything else you wanted to, concerned about that at all or?
No, the, the only thing, uh, he had to mention the, we were, we wanted the easement as part of the condition for the zoning change. And they've, they've agreed to that.
Okay.
Uh, we also have the applicant here. If you have any questions.
Yep, that's what I was just gonna say. Go ahead and.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me this evening. Yes, um, just as Barrett read, that is the legal description that we are requesting to have zone to C one property so that we could build a commercial building to offer high speed internet service to the community of Horace.
Okay. All right. So you got, you're gonna be taking up, um, I'm just looking at this, the property here. So you're gonna be taking up one of the rectangles in there.
We are the north lot.
North lot.
And, um, our management team and board of directors has no problem with having the easement that was suggested and.
Okay. Good. So I don't know if, might we just do a quick, go, Dicky Rural is doing one in town here. You can even do it, whoever, we got some new council members.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't sure if you're aware of who, um, our parent company is Dicky Rural Networks. We're a cooperative that has been in business for seventy years. We provide high speed internet service via fiber optics. And our, um, marketing name is Ready Tech. And so we, Ready Tech will be moving into, um, the city of Horace by, um, investing in the fiber optic network and offering high speed internet as a second provider or third provider to the community. We currently just overbuilt the city of Castleton and we are working on Mapleton this summer um, to provide them with high speed internet by fiber optics also.
I don't know. I probably have asked this before, but I forgot. When are you guys planning on starting to put down the fiber lines in?
June first is our goal date. Now that's.
Yeah, I know, but.
On a lot of materials. Yes, yes. June first.
Yeah.
And our, I mean, we hope to be offering services fall still.
Sure.
Before the end of the year.
Okay. Excellent.
I'm stating, cause I'm actually working with Ready Tech on their building.
Okay. Put you down as that.
Which is beautiful, by the way. I'm really excited. There are some LED features on that building that I'm very excited about.
Yeah, we are, um, hoping to move very quickly on it. And, um, Ready Tech actually, you know, they have very high standards, so we're excited to work with them and the opportunity to bring a nice building out here.
Good. So I will open this up for a public hearing. If anybody's got any comments, questions, concerns. I'll go once, go twice, and then I will close the public hearing. All right. So do you guys have any other questions on this one?
Yeah, so Barrett, what was this person that emailed? Um, I see that it was supposed to be forwarded over, um, to Jeff and I. It never did get sent over to us. Um, so this was kind of a surprise to me when I saw this. Um, but I'm just wondering what, um, it sounds like he's upset because of the lack of communication or is that only?
I guess some of the specifics that he mentioned in the letter, and I, I do apologize if you didn't get a copy of that. That's my intention to include that. But, uh, he stated that with the property owner or, uh, notification letters, he would like a map included so that he would be able to see where the, the, uh, application for which property would be located at. Um, other than that, I can't really recall any other details of the, uh, process that he that stated that he had complaints about.
So yeah, what was on communication here? I think what he's referring to is what Fargo sends up versus what West Fargo's. But I think what he's referring to is what Fargo sends out versus what Wes Fargo sends out versus what we send out and can we do better is kind of what he's getting at. Just the bare minimum, eh, you know, I got to see the letter for the residents up at Deer Creek and, or the, the proposed development up there. It's one paragraph, you know, can we do a better job of presenting whatever is common? Is kind of what I'm getting at. I realize, I realize it meets the legal requirement, I'm not, not opposing that. Is there anything we can do additional to that in a separate, whether it's a separate piece of paper that goes with it to help explain? I'm asking you, okay?
Yeah, and Steph, we're always looking for ways to improve the process. I'd be more than happy to sit down and have that discussion if anybody has any recommendations on how that could be done.
So to address your concern and address the email that was received, one, the email is addressing, trying to address the concern about special assessments and comments into this, you're rejecting, saying that they are not in favor of rezone. They're two totally different issues.
I understand.
So I, I do want to make sure that's clear for this agenda item, that's totally separate. As for in regards to special assessments, addressing your questions or concerns, that is one of the main reasons why we're doing the special assessment policy is to outline how we would go above and beyond what century code requires. Because century code, I know we've been talking a lot at the staff level and with yourself about really potential methodology, how we use it or how do we break out specials and dollars. The communication has, we started off talking but not had more discussions on that with the special assessment policy development, but.
I mean, I don't think it's an overall problem with communication and just special assessments. I think it's like in general, people that I keep hearing are struggling.
You know, and I'd be more than happy to have that conversation on, offline. I think it'd be beneficial for all of us.
I just want you to know, I'm a little upset that I didn't get the email.
All right, so the, the rezone. Any more questions on that? Otherwise, I'm going to, I think I'm going to accept a motion to proceed with the, with the condition for the easement.
I want the motion then.
Okay. Jeff makes the motion. Can I get a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, Naomi does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Chelsea abstains, so it's unanimous and passes, let's move on to eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
You got this one.
Yep, yep. Next item for you is to talk about portfolio assignments. We've talked about them one by one or a little bit here or there, but we've never, we haven't laid out yet with the council and now that elections are over, we can solidify the portfolio assignments. This is just the breakout, how it's, how we're operating right now and, you know, for council to discuss if there's any, if they want to keep it, how we have it broken out or if there's adjustments or whatever you'd like to do. Right now, we have Councilmember Brooklyn is for parks, events, community facilities and emergency services, so emergency services obviously mainly would be involving in law enforcement and fire. Councilmember Johnson is the operations HR in the economic development. Councilmember White is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning does have a really big one going on, obviously all the different development activity, but also we have the zoning ordinance overhaul, so heads up on that one. And then I know Councilmember White has, has interest in being involved in infrastructure when applicable or when you can, so. And then Metroco, for Councilmember Trudeau would be MetroCog and infrastructure. And then for Mayor would be, he's involved with any, any of the different portfolios, so it's a council member with Mayor is how we've had the breakouts traditionally, so. But like I said, I just wanted to bring it up to the council so everybody knows what the portfolios or portfolios are and then if there's any adjustments that can be discussed to council.
Who wants to take up planning and zoning? Don't get it. I've got my hands full to duly address everybody over there. How Doug coming to you is going to come up.
I'm just looking forward to having a full planning and zoning, that's nice.
Yeah.
So what do you want us to do with this? We got to say?
Basically, if you're, if, if you're good with those portfolios, then I would suggest you just take action from the council because then we've kind of solidified it with the city council. It's not necessary, but it would be helpful.
Yeah, unless somebody's got something different on that, they want to swap or horse trade.
What are you looking at me for, Sarah? I'm not taking your stuff.
Nobody wants to take my stuff. No. I, I got no changes. I'm happy, I like what I'm involved in. I hope I'm doing justice and I'm trying, so.
Ryan, would we be able to get an email?
Yeah, once it's done, or yeah, I could email it to you.
Yep.
And I'd be, I'd give an email address and stuff.
Yep.
Anybody else, otherwise what I'm going to do is accept a motion to accept the portfolios as they are.
So moved.
Chelsea did, Naomi did a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, nineteen.
Hey, this one we pretty much hashed out, so it's re, retouching base on what we discussed earlier, but it's overall, uh, looking to really get official stance from the council on how we handle design fees. Like I said, we've talked about that at the council level earlier tonight, but if you'd like to have that stance as overall, this is how we're going to do any developments if a developer asks. We would cover the design fees if it's using special assessments or how would you like to go forth with that? So like I say, you did, you, you discussed that within the Lakeview ID agreement. Obviously, there wasn't action taken tonight by council on that. The precedence has been where if a developer does request it, it is included within the special assessment cost. It does provide checks and balances because you do typically have the dynamics of an engineer working with the developer to design it to the design standards of the city and then the city engineer checking it, making sure that is truly the case. So that is a benefit from this. I can't think of any other, or really much for situations where it has not been included in a development in the past couple of years. Looking at Jim, if he had any thoughts of, but the majority of them are.
Typically, the developers run at a faster pace than the city, so we have had a problem with them kind of circumventing the process. We, the past council has liked to do things in the process that the century code sets out, doing it all one step at a time. They've come in and thought they could shorten the process by, all right, here's a set of plans, here's the report, do them all right now and we're done with it. And it, and it wasn't really the preferred method by the past city council to do it all at once. It was to do it in the process as it is. And sometimes when the developers, consultants do the work, they get credit, they try to circumvent the process. But we've kind of, we've cracked down on that in these last couple to make sure that the right process is being followed and being established.
So is it more or less work for you then? Same amount of work?
It's less work for me.
Okay.
But.
Yeah.
It's something that the, if the developer has a relationship with an engineer, we review it on the city's behalf. I mean, that's, that's, that's my role, working for the city.
I don't think anybody had an issue with it.
Yeah.
The only reason it didn't get through is because someone wants some time to really.
Yeah, we'll make names.
And, and we haven't had, and, and like I said, we haven't, we've always gone to the council case by case. So having a stance from the city council that provides staff the ability to where we can include that illegal when they're drafting ID agreement is something we know, yep, this is where the council stands. Just like layer of credit, if a developer wants to ask for a reduction, reduce layer of credit, they can ask you, but the council's already made a stance on it. We tell them, hey, this is where the council stands on it, this is where they've taken action. They may still want to ask you, but you're going, you're going to give them your stance of where you stand on layer of credit, for example.
And I think we were more than fair in agreeing, let's revisit this in a year, let's see where we're at, let's see how the lots are filling up, you know?
Yeah.
That's not unreasonable.
Yep.
And for a city our size to take on that type of liability is just not feasible at this point in time.
Yep.
But with this, I have no issue with this, provided that the same protocols are followed and that the same review process is followed and that we have someone on-site overseeing the engineering, design and developer constructability activities on a daily basis to hold them accountable.
And that's on the, and I understand what you're saying, that's on the implementation side?
Correct.
This is on just the design side, but yes, included within, when we award a project and we account for the special assessments for it, we account for the dollars for that very thing you're talking about. So a lot of times you'll get entering an agreement with your state for that project saying, here's what it'd be, and they'll include inspection services into it. So the city has placed a lot stronger focus on inspection of work, I, I believe compared to what the city has done in the past. And the past, I'm referring to, we're talking like five years out or longer. So the city does put a lot of emphasis making sure there's a inspector available watching the con, you know, making sure contractor's doing what needs to be done and we're having quality work there, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so what I'd be looking for is just, you know, that overall stance from the council would be, if it's done by a motion, then I have it in the minutes to where I could say, yep, this is the council's stance. So it'd be if you're all right with design review, your design fees to be included within assessment districts, then we'd have a motion for that. And if you want to make it to where it says it's always has to be, it always has to be designed by one engineer, checked by a city engineer, you could do that too, however you prefer the word is.
Jeff, Sarah, you guys good? Have a concern one way or the other, a preference one way or the other?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, just follow the process and make sure that it meets our ordinances and requirements. I don't care how it's done and I'm not going to tell someone, you have to do it this way, just, you know.
Yeah, just so we're on the same page, that's the key here. So we're all united front.
So if you deny it at any point in time, Jim, does it come to us then or does it stop at you and deny?
What do you mean?
A design.
If it doesn't meet the specs, it is typically worked out before.
Sent back to the developer and said fix.
You don't see it.
If it doesn't meet the overall intent.
Yeah, we don't see it typically.
Yep.
I don't think we ever have, if we come to think of it.
Nothing has come to council level. We've done a lot of back and forth, you know, throughout the design and throughout, but we usually vet that before we bring it to you.
Yeah, we kick something back, almost every development, we kick something back to the engineer that is designing it. And that's the nature of when you're designing out something as big as those are, yeah, we're going to find something and I can't think of a development that hasn't had at least some items to kick back saying, hey, this needs to be changed, this needs to be fixed. And then by the time it comes to the council, the plans and specs, they've been vetted out. We're not presenting plans and specs that need your attention of changes or anything, so. And that's, it, it's pretty rare when those happen. I'm not saying it doesn't ever happen because sometimes things come up where adjustments have to occur, but they're pretty rare.
Okay. So we'll be looking for a motion on this.
I'll make the motion in a second.
Okay. Sarah makes the motion, Jeff does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jim, water improvement.
Yes, if you would bring up the attachment there. There's a memo here, we're going to talk about water improvement district twenty twenty dash six. Plans and specifications are complete. They have been sent to the state water commission so they can be on their June meeting for potential cost share. The project schedule is approved plans specs tonight, advertising the paper on Wednesday, open bids on May twenty-seventh, award the project contingent upon state water commission financing on the seventh. I do have a typo on here, the state water commission meets June eighth and we're still, provided everything falls in line, we're going to get that project complete by the end of November this year. So all the documents have been submitted to the state water, or to the Department of Environmental Quality for their review and their environmental. We are on schedule with them and that would be for the local share portion of the project that's administered through the drinking water state revolving fund. So what I'm looking for tonight is just approval of the plans specs. I attached some.